.......................................
Up first, we have the public hearing on the town meeting warrant. So during our election in April, we had a number of items not passed. So what we've elected to do is offer some descriptions of these items and place them on the ballot again for June 24th from, we're doing what, 4 to, 2 to 6, right? 2 to 6 p.m. here at the town office. So what I will offer to do is I will offer to read each one, and then I will offer to read the explanation, and I will entertain questions if anybody has any. So Article 1, to choose a moderator. Oh, that's not, that's the old one. Sorry. That's the old one. So Article 2, sewer interest rate. This article sets the interest rate charged to sewer users who have not paid their bills on time. The rate has been 8% for the last two years. The only, this only affects sewer users who are delinquent in their payments. The actual article on the ballot will read, Article 2, to see if the town shall affix an interest rate of 8% to any biannual sewer assessment not paid within the due date as established on the annual billing. This was one of the items that did not pass. I would, this is a public hearing, so do we have any comment from the public on this that would like to, maybe why they might have voted no, or? I'm not seeing any.
I have a question.
You don't?
Just because I don't know.
Yeah.
So if we've already voted on it and we've already said no, why do we have to vote again?
Right. Well, because it's up to us to put it back out to vote to try to get the budget to pass. And we, we just, I did not personally, I can't speak for the rest of the board, did not find a lot of good reasons for get anybody to speak with me of why they voted no. So it's up to us to try to get our annual budget to pass. So we are going to place it back on the ballot and attempt again and try to offer explanations to people of why some people might, might vote no because they didn't understand it. And that's why we're doing it again as it is.
So if this article fails and doesn't go back for a third vote, there will be no interest charged on delinquent sewer fees because we wouldn't have permission to assess an interest rate on anybody that didn't pay.
And I mean, as we probably know from all our other bills, interest rates are, you know, kind of encourage people to pay their bills, to help cover costs, incur from dealing with delinquent, uh, delinquent accounts. Because delinquent accounts will eventually cost the rest of the payers, you know, money if you have to pay for somebody that was late on their account. That's just the way I deal with it, and that's, I mean, I think that's the facts of it. I'm, okay. Question, will you? Yes?
Hey, Tom in the ghetto here from Mill Falls. Is this considered a referendum vote if it's brought back? How does that?
I don't have, yes, yeah, that would consider a referendum then.
What's the state law about voting on referendum votes that have already been voted down?
I'm not sure on the state law. Jared, you have a?
I, yeah, I don't know the statute, but, I mean, it comes back. It's, it's no different than the school budget when that gets voted down. They bring it back until, until it passes.
Is school budget referendum as well, is that considered a referendum vote?
Correct.
On this article?
I think we should also mention that it has been 8% for all the previous years. We're not establishing a new percentage. It's been 8% voted on every year for the past several years. It's just, we have to have the permission to do it, and that's why it's on the ballot, but it's, it's been 8% for...
It's been 8% for two years. It was seven and a half for a number of years previous to that.
So it's not like we're suddenly imposing an 8% increase if you haven't paid your bill. It's what it is.
Yes, John?
Personally, I do, maybe, there's a lot of retired people here on fixed incomes. Maybe they're having challenges to pay some of this stuff, and charging an extra 8% doesn't help them make the payments. You know, so it's, things are expensive here. Our tax, our property taxes, sewer bills, the water bills. So I'll start adding up, I'll be into that a little later, but, I mean, you would ask why some of the people may have voted no against this. Let's try to help people pay their bills and adding interest to it doesn't help. And, yeah, I won't get into the mechanics of the whole sewer and the costs behind it, but that would be something we could discuss, you know, what are the real costs and that sort of thing.
Any other discussion on this article? Yes?
Can you tell me the ratio of people that make use of the town sewer as compared to the other taxpayers in the municipality that don't have town sewer?
We have 300 and...
So there's 600 and some 70 some odd sewer rate payers versus the, I don't remember how many parcels we have. It's, it's over 2,000, so it's actually a pretty small percentage.
So you're saying 600 and 600 some change of actual sewer rate payers, and the rest are just other parcels which do not pay anything towards the sewer. This is strictly sewer.
But they may be voting against it not knowing the details?
Yeah, that's a good possibility, and that's why we're doing this, for questioning and stuff. Yes?
Do you know what percentage of that 600 some odd is delinquent? That this percentage?
Not as many as there has previously been. There was a number of years that these were piled and the legal proceedings weren't being followed. The collections actually are much, much better. They did just send out 30-day notices, and I honestly don't remember how many it was in significantly less than previous years.
Thank you.
Yes?
I contacted the Secretary of State today about reconsideration of referendum. And I have the statute here. I don't know if you guys want to look at it, but there's quite a lot of rules that need to be followed that aren't being followed according to what you sent me. Would you like to look at it?
Um, I will take it. I'm not sure.
It's one of the last pages, is what she said we need to go with.
So I'll read through this when I get a moment towards the end, but do we have any other questions on the Article 2? Going to move on to Article 3, general government. I'm gonna switch it. Article 3, to see if, this is the wording on the ballot, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate from taxation and other sources a sum of $515,953 the ensuing year for general government. This includes select, select board committees, administration, elections, treasurer assessing, code enforcement, general assistance, contingency, legal. We offer this, this brief exemplary. General government, the article is for the operations of the select board, planning board of appeals, the entire town office. Also under the heading is general assistance, tax assessing, elections, and legal services. Every transaction done in the town filters through this department, including but not limited to car registrations, birth certificates, tax payments, and permits. The primary increase in this article are increased costs of supplies and software to run the town, as well as wage adjustments. For this budget, revenues generated out of the cost center are projected to increase by almost $400,000. There is an expense increase of $90,050. However, factoring in revenues, the net is a decrease of $304,932 for this article. Do we have questions on the general government article? Yes, John?
Another bubble question. Do we know how much per taxpayer that increases the tax rate, the total rate, for just this one article alone?
We don't. We're still waiting for our regal numbers.
And then with that, why they're, you know, questioning why there's so many items lumped together, I guess? Like we have code enforcement, which seems like it could be its own, own costs versus some of the other articles that are just sort of general operations. Seems like things are being lumped together to get them to pass all as one instead of, you know, itemizing them out to allow the townspeople to actually vote on what they, they want to pay for.
So this is actually the way the budget was constructed last year, and this is a directive of the town's auditor. We changed the chart of accounts, so we're following state practices now, and this is the cost center that those items are viewed.
Yes?
To that point though, can you itemize within that cost center so that the townspeople are more aware of what is, maybe there's, I'll be honest, I have self-defense access to this type of question.
Well, I have the breakdown sheet. I can read it off. Yes, it's not listed on here. You're very limited on wording and what you can actually place on the ballot. I will, I'm more than willing to read off what we have for general government. It's pretty lengthy, but we have time, I suppose.
I don't know that anybody would, I think reading it, I know myself, I'm not gonna remember it.
Well...
It's more or less a request for a listing that people could see.
I can, I can type something up and post it on the website if that's a request that the board has.
And then you said there was a 400,000 increase?
In the rev, projected, the projected revenue.
And there's no, there's no reason why that?
Well, we have, we have some, some things. We have, for, for one example, our interest rate through the bank was increased a significant amount. We were getting, what was it?
Point eight five.
Point eight five.
Yeah, point zero eight five percent.
And it's, is up to three now?
Yeah.
And now it's up to 3%. So that is where, what, hundreds?
Uh, we're estimating $120,000 in revenue, interest revenue from the bank.
So that's one area where there's more revenue. And that was just working with the bank, you know, thank our new town manager for that because that was one phone call made that made the town a significant amount of money. I can...
It's one of the other ones sharing my files. The other ones that were significantly increases off the top of. I don't have my revenue sheet. Summer rec, yeah, summer recreation. Oh, the sewer fees because the sewer department is, is, the revenues go under the, the general government heading, if you will, so we have a better budget for sewer this year. Last year was the first time in 52 years we had sewer budget. So in some respects, it was, you know, kind of throwing a dart at the horn, but we've been through a whole fiscal, almost a whole fiscal year. At the end of the month, it'll be a whole fiscal year, so we have a much better handle on the expenses, and this is a, a more true projection of the revenues needed to cover that cost center for sewer and sewer treatment. So that was an increase of...
Like 180, roughly?
Yeah, almost $200,000 there. Yeah, it's, it's a little bit here and it's a little bit there. Like I, I said previously, this is a whole brand-new chart of accounts that we're operating on this year, so it's, these are, these are more accurate numbers we have moving forward.
That makes it sound like all of us taxpayers are paying for the sewer bills.
You're not. That's, that revenue is coming in from the rate payers. The expenses are covered by that revenue line. It's technically an enterprise account, so we can't, we're not allowed to use sewer revenue for anything other than sewer or sewer, sewer treatment.
But you're asking us to 200,000 is what to take care of?
No, no, the rate payers. That's, that's revenue generated by the rate payers. But we still have to show it as part of the budget. The way, the way a town, a town meeting warrant works in the town audit, we have to have voter approval for every single penny we expend during the course of the year, regardless of where that revenue comes from. Because what they do when they come in and do our annual audit every year is they're gonna take that warrant and they're gonna add up every single one of these articles, and they're gonna say, okay, so this is how much money you were approved to spend. This is how much you actually spent. And, you know, it, that's how they work it out. So that's why we're using reserve funds for some of the capital purchases. We're using, we're asking to use tip funds for a few lines in here as well. That's all money that's sitting in the bank. Nothing is being raised in taxation from those. It's already previously been raised through taxation. We're just utilizing and cap, not capitalizing, but we're, we're using those funds to help make sure we don't increase taxes any more than is necessary. Does that make sense?
Sorta.
Sorta. It's really hard to explain, so...
Yes, John?
Yes, for the record and clarification, is this considered a referendum vote as well to bring this back to the ballot?
Yeah, because that's how, yeah, we vote with secret ballots, so a secret ballot is a referendum. Or Australian ballot, however you wanna phrase it.
Do we have any further questions on this article? Seeing none, gonna move on to Article 4, benefits. Article 4, this is how it'll be worded on the ballot again, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate from taxation and other sources $902,48 for the ensuing year for benefits, insurances, benefits. This article pays for all the town's insurances, worker compensation, buildings and grounds, unemployment, and employee insurances. Additionally, all employee taxes and retirement are paid with the approval of this article. An estimated $111,200 of this article is paid by the sewer rate payers for the sewer and the sewer treatment departments and represents an increase of 3%. Do we have any questions regarding the benefits? This is a pretty difficult number to wiggle around in. There's only limited, limited choices for insurances, and we're already using what we found to be the cheapest insurance. And the town does pay, pays 92%, and the employees pay 8%. There's also increases with some of our retirements. We've offered better retirement for the police officers in hopes to retain people. As you may know, we were down to one officer not that long ago, and we're up to six now?
Five.
Five? We're up to five. So there's been, that comes along with wages and things like that, which unfortunately is an increase for that for you guys, but we need to maintain help. So I don't know how to further explain the benefits, but I'll field as many questions as we can take.
No. He said that the sewer rate money from the payers that is supposed to already be spent on the sewer process. You said $110,000 was paid for by the sewer rate payers? Is that for the sewer employees?
Yes.
Their health insurances? Is there like?
Well, it's the sewer employees, it's the property and casualty coverage for the sewer treatment plant, it's, it's all that.
So like all of that expense is covered by the 110 that's being paid for, like they, there's no...
But that's not their wages, right?
No.
That's a, that's a benefit type of...
Right, that's right. That's for the 80. Sorry.
Well, pre and the shared super incentive.
For four.
Right, also with insurances for the grounds and stuff, yeah.
Yeah. And the, and the payroll taxes, it's, it's everything.
Yeah.
The word benefits is misleading for some odds.
John?
No, exactly related. I'm just wondering, is it possible to get copies of the budget in historical, maybe past five years, 10 years, something?
It's, we could definitely, we could work on that. It's gonna be hard to do apples to oranges on the budget because two years ago, we switched to this new style one. So the old budget items are a little different, and they're not gonna line up because things have been moved into different, different categories, so some seem, looks like they're a bigger jump, but it's because things have been added into one line, into one budget item. So they're, they're available, they're just gonna not...
Yes, I understand they may not be lining up apples for apples. The subtotal at the end should be representative of, you know, total cost. Understandably how it's distributed will be different, but if I can get copies of all of them, I'd like to take a look to see how, how some of this is going.
Yep. I think we can get that information, and I can share it with you.
Yeah.
Yeah?
So I think what some of the issue is, when you see an increase to benefits or whatever, when you lump it into a category, we just got out of four years of having our ass handed to us with high inflation, high interest, and all this and that. So when you lump something together like benefits and, whatever, just like benefits and what's this?
Insurances.
Insurances? You, you know, people are like, well, I didn't get anything in the last four years. I lost my buck, you know? Now you guys, as employees of the municipality, are asking for an increase, and we're still playing catch-up.
Right.
So I think the wording's gotta be different, and it's gotta be, it's gotta be expressed clearly what percent, what percent and what department and whatever, whatever program is getting that increase, because people are just gonna say, no, they've had enough every day.
Right. I mean, for, for an example, health insurance is a very large jump this year. That's, that's a big, that's a big one. We're looking at, what, $130,000 in a year just for increased health insurance costs? Yes, John?
Yeah, I think some of it, in my view personally, it's understandably, the costs have increased, but, you know, do we need as many cop cars? Do we need to spend the money that we're spending? Is it really being scrutinized? If we were starting out with a zero-sum budget, things may look different, right? If you're just, if we're starting from a, an already high level, things typically just give increase. So I think, for myself, and I know a few others, just a little more scrutiny on the spending because, as mentioned, we've all, you know, when our income drops or our expenses go up, we have to cut back. We don't go out to eat, we don't do this, we don't buy a new vehicle, we don't buy expensive lawn mowers. We cut back, and we just, at least personally, I don't see the town cutting back. And maybe it is, but looking at all the police cars and all the things, the equipment and the things that are being spent, it's, it's hard to understand it from the outside, I guess.
And then, and I, and I can definitely see where you're coming with that, and my, my opinion, and it's just me, is that it's really hard to run off old equipment. And that comes from experience working with older equipment. We could buy old plow trucks. We could. But it's 30 some odd thousand dollars to rebuild an engine if they go bad. That's big money. A lot of them are rusted out. So you get into a lot of problems buying old used equipment, and it's, that's, that's one of the reasons why I myself have gone ahead and approved a lot of the, you know, gone with a lot of the ask for the newer equipment. And I, I just, that's why, that's why I have, and that's all I can give you for an answer on that.
We spend the money to increase the equipment because nobody wants to be living on the street in the winter when a plow truck is no longer functioning. And your roads aren't getting plowed or sanded. So, you know, to upgrade the equipment is, it would, you have a choice. Either shovel your own part of the road or have a plow truck that works.
And to add to that, to add to that, I hear on the police car...
People in town would pick up plows and be all set, I think.
I hear on the police car issue, but I think someone might be able to inform you how many police calls they've been getting.
Are you pointing out any of them?
Yeah. You would know better than me.
Well, wait, let me distract those words, so that way I hit everybody that's out there as well. So first, non-societal or members of community, I apologize for being late. I was out there running calls. And Police Department is inherently, is very busy, it's a very busy community. And, you know, I think that, you know, the select board has been pretty productive and supportive of investing in public safety because public safety and streets are two main things that really can continue to keep a community, right? And this is a very, very basic community for a population of 3,000. I was hired here with the anticipation that I would be running 10% patrol activity in my contract. And currently, and have been for almost a year now, with 100% patrol or activity in this community because it's that busy with that shorthand. But it's my commitment and my goal to create something better for this community today and tomorrow. And it takes that vision and investment and support from the community to make that happen. And yes, we do have two new patrol cars. One of those patrol cars, in addition to eight staffing. The other one replaced a patrol car that had 127,000 miles and 14,000 engine hours on it. And if you really put that in context, that vehicle has been running every day since its birth in 2018 for 47 hours on it. If you just equate it in miles on a car, it's 400, 500,000 mile car. In addition to that, we need radios. So instead of buying old police radios, which are inherently very expensive, it's my goal to, to build these in chunks so that way these otherwise large expenses get absorbed into smaller expenses if we build that new facility. In addition to that, we do look at our neighboring agencies, and, and I hate to say it, you know, but, you know, officers, as we're trying to attract in this community, they're going to look and see what we have. And they're gonna wanna work for an organization that brings better and nicer things. And they're gonna wanna work for an organization that brings better and nicer things. And, and I'm not coming to the community asking for, you know, eighty thousand or something. I am trying to, to look forward, um, the vehicle spent a tremendous amount of time idling, and it's my vision to use the higher risk, because one, we're gonna save money on gasoline, and then two, we're gonna save on engine hours physically running that vehicle, potentially expanding the life of that car. So, I, I, I don't think they'll refer to this spending as far as, as my mission goes. As a matter of fact, I think we're doing very good with, with what we have. And, and a lot of people that, that know what I do down, down there in the basement is, um, on my time off, I'm signing up in the scene to run out of wires to, to save money, to do things, you know, access, um, if someone wants to access the full system, if I want a new camera, I'll get up on the road and run a wire. Um, and any computer work I'll try to tackle and do it myself, so, um, I'm very committed to this community, I'm very committed to its role. And, uh, and thus far, I've had an outstanding relationship with members of this community too, as a lot of members in the community have come forward to say like, hey, since you've been acquitted, I've released an indictment against this community. And less crime, that's my number one goal, is to run out the trafficking within this community.
Amen.
With that said though, there's, there's a lot of work to do. And I need everybody's cooperation because the police department inherently does not make the community safe. It's the community members that make the community safe. But they need to have a robust relationship with the police department in order for us to be empowered to do our jobs. And that takes trust, transparency, and a friendship, a relationship. That stated, I'm open to any type of questions.
First, thank you for putting your, your life on the line. This question, you're not asking this to be a jerk, but interested. How many crimes, I don't know how many patrols you have and the different things, but how many crimes do you actually stop by your patrol versus showing up after the crime has been committed and you're then investigating and reporting?
It's, it's a tough statistic to put out there because a lot of the jobs we do right now because of the fact that we're shorthand is what I consider proactive, or rather reactive, which means that we're reacting to a call for service and a lot of times that does generate rest. With that stated too, I would say that there's probably, and forgive me because my staff may be wrong on this today as I'm just, you know, doing the estimation, but I'd say roughly twenty percent of our activity is actually proactively generated. Proactive patrol is the number one way to deter crime in the community. So, the more we can get officers out there physical driving in the community, um, waving at people and can drive around at two or three o'clock warning, the less likely that, that crime is to occur because of that proactiveness. And, and I understand the vital importance of it, that answered your question. Yes, I mean, so, so.
It's kind of a different branch, deterrence versus enforcement.
In part of, so, in, I asked where, so for the community, for the board members and the others, where is, where and how is the crime originating? And how can the community work to solve the issue? Because, at least in my view, police scene is not solving an issue, it's a Band-Aid in the interim, right? Because there are societies and some towns where.
Excuse me, John, I appreciate your question, I would really like to get back to the actual public hearing part of it and I understand where you're trying to go with that and I think we could work out something where we could all sit down and chit chat about that, but I'd like to, I really would like to get back to the, to the article itself.
And I'm always open to the dialogue, it can help, it opens up walls, so you're always welcome with your questions or.
Yeah?
I just have a question, because if we're getting new vehicles, whether it's for, for plowing or for police, are we looking at doing it like a preventative oil undercoating for them so that they actually can have a good, long life?
They are all undercoated every year.
They are? Okay.
Every one of them.
Thank you. It's good to know.
Yes, we, we have a really good crew that looks after the equipment, we really do. All right, do we have any other questions on benefits? Seeing none, we're going to move on to capital projects. Article five, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate from taxation and other sources, four hundred and fifty thousand, five hundred dollars for the ensuing year for capital projects. List on the capital projects, capital project is anything that is valued at over ten thousand dollars and has a life of at least ten years. Included in this is paving, the headgear and the dump body for the new plow truck. The second half of the town-wide reevaluation. And the fire apparatus that received approval to borrow the funds for, but we cannot buy without approval of this article. Some of the items in this article will be used in reserve funds resulting in a net decrease of ten thousand raised from taxation. Do we have questions on capital projects on article five?
I have a question.
Yes.
So, the reevaluation process, is that a little bit?
Yes, we have, well, we have to set money aside for it, it's mandated by the state that we do it. I believe every fifteen years and it's been, what, twenty?
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three since it's actually been done, so we're kinda up against the wall with it over the last few years. We've been putting money away into this for what, three, what's this, the third year we put money into it? I believe.
So, that would be the, I guess, the labor and?
Well, it's, we had to contract a private company to do it and their fee is, it's quite high, is it two hundred?
It was two hundred thousand.
Two hundred thousand dollars, so. And that's, that's something that the state requires us to do, especially when it comes to the home, to, to guaranteeing what they give us and, uh, the home set exemption, uh, we have to have that done so you guys can receive your full home set exemption value, so it's.
I'm guessing we didn't budget, of course, we didn't have a plan for it to announce.
Right, right, that is, moving forward, that is our plan, is to put away money every year for that, so we're not trying to raise it all in a two-year period. Do we have any other questions on capital projects? Seeing none, I'm gonna move on to article six. Articles, article six, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate from taxation and other sources, four hundred and seventy-four thousand, eight hundred and seventy-nine dollars for the ensuing year for debt services. Debt service, this article grants the treasurer permission to pay the bond payments that have been approved by the voters in previous years. The voters have already been obligated in these funds and have already obligated in these funds and are required to make the payments. We are required to vote on this article every year for tax commitment purposes as well as a governmental auditing purpose. If we do not make the payments, we default on the loans and the bond bank will take legal action against the town. There are a total of eight bonds in this article, three for the fire department, Park Street Station, repairs, East Livermore Substation and the new apparatus, and five for the sewer treatment plant. Additionally, these loans for the treatment plant, paid by the sewer rate users only, not general taxation, will lose their principal forgiveness amounting to three million dollars, for which the sewer users will be become responsible to pay. We have questions on debt services. Of the, we have to also remember that J splits with, when it comes to the sewer, so just for the rate payers to keep in mind that. What was it, a hundred and twenty-four thousand of it, right? Somewhere around that will be paid, if you're a sewer rate payer, will be paid by J because we do all use the same sewer treatment plant. We have, I mean, this pretty much comes down to this is money we borrowed and we've been approved to borrow by the voters over the, a number of years. And this is the, the item that we need to approve to pay, to include our payments. Yes, John?
Is this one that includes the five hundred thousand for the fire station down in East Livermore?
Yes, well, it's, well, it's six hundred.
I guess people don't want that. Town feels we can't afford that, then that could be a good reason why they're saying no.
So, that bond was actually approved, uh, last year, this would be the first year that you would be making a payment on that. That payment is approximately thirty thousand dollars. We don't know how much exactly it's gonna be yet because we don't have a contract that is, actually, we had to, had to put it out to bid again for the third time, so I don't have a contract for that yet.
That was also brought to the board by a petition at the time. And then, because there was enough signatures, it was placed on the ballot for which then people voted on.
It was, it was four hundred and twenty thousand.
Yes?
I just, just a question, if, say, for instance, the bond for the, for the East Livermore Fire Department was built, whatever, so say that doesn't, it gets voted down again, and, you know, what are those consequences? And two, is there something like that where, you know, we've got this bond to, to do it, but we realize, wow, we just, we can't afford this? Is there a way to, for lack of a better way, to give the money back and just forego doing that? Or, I just wonder, what are the ramifications if we don't build it?
So, for the East Livermore Fire Substation, we, we haven't, we haven't borrowed that money yet. We have just legislative body approval to borrow the funds. But I had to include an estimated payment in there.
So, I mean, so we could, I'm, I'm not trying to not build the fire station or whatever, but we could say, hey, we don't have an extra, whatever it is, to do it and not do it correctly.
Correct.
And save some money, I just wondered, that's all.
And it's the same thing with the fire apparatus that was approved in, on April twenty-ninth, that was five hundred fifty, up to five hundred fifty thousand dollars for a new fire apparatus. Because I can't buy a new fire truck yet because I don't have a capital projects budget approved and I don't have a debt service article approved, I can't, I can't purchase it, so. Because you have to have all three of those to be able to make the purchase, so. So, once, you know, if, if these pass, you know, that will move forward and I, I would pick up the bond and the estimated payment on that is about seventy-nine thousand dollars. We do have a smidge over three hundred thousand dollars in that reserve account for the fire department. We're going to put a hundred thousand dollars down, that's why we only have to borrow five hundred and fifty. And the first year's payment of that seventy-nine thousand dollars will also come out of reserve. So, none of that first payment will be coming out of taxation.
Do we have any other questions on debt services? Okay, up next we have article seven. To see if the town will vote to appropriate from the revenue of the town's tax increment financing district, the sum of forty-five thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars for the Andersgoggin Valley Council of Government fiscal year two thousand twenty-five dues, donation to the Jug Hill Riders and one half of a CEO planner position. The town has an established TIF and at one time raised appropriated funds for taxation to sit in an account for development activities. These funds have strict criteria attached to them and have not been used in several years. This year, we propose to use these funds to offset taxes in the amount of forty-five thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars. This is money that has already been raised through taxation.
I think, I think if you add that that money comes from registration of the ATV's and snowmobiles, people will understand that a little bit better. Isn't that where that money's coming from?
No, this is money that when the town first approved the TIF, in order to have the TIF, you had to raise and appropriate money from taxation to sit in a, a, a special bank account, if you will, to be used specifically for TIF-approved activities. One of those is economic development, the other one is a business park, I, I can't remember what the others were, but.
Okay, I understand the TIF part, but I think for the Jug Hill Riders, that, that money, was, was that coming from the registration fees? Going to the club to improve snowmobiles?
No, that's all part of, uh, one of the state grants. This, they came to us this year asking for funds to purchase a used snowmobile for their groomer. What the board and the budget committee decided to do was to make a five thousand dollar donation to them. Again, one of the approved uses of the TIF funds is for trail maintenance. And where that groomer and snowmobile are used for trail maintenance, um, they decided to take that five thousand dollars from those TIF funds and appropriate it to the Jug Hill Riders.
All right.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does.
Could, could you explain maybe where the TIF originated?
I have no idea.
How long has it been?
It's been in existence for twenty, twenty years or so.
It, it was to encourage new businesses and that's where, I forgot what TIF stands for, but it's tax.
Increment, incremental.
Okay, and it was voted on to put so much aside to encourage new businesses. And that money just sat there for years and wasn't even looked at. And in the past four or five years, it's been looked at and we're trying to find a way to use it legally because it's got a bunch of strings attached to it. And there's only certain areas where that money can be utilized, so.
The program, if they're, if they're implemented well at the town level, if they can be complicated.
It's just been sitting there, so we're trying to.
Yes, John?
It seems to have a few different levels, I'm quite confused, so what's, what's what? So taxpayers are paying for what? So, there's a tax being put into a TIF?
Not anymore.
Okay, not anymore.
Yeah, the TIF hasn't been funded and I, I can't even find a record of it, sorry.
That might be worth funding, actually, um, but different story. So taxpayers are giving money to Jug Hill Riders?
No.
This money was raised and at one time, yes, that's where the money came from. I mean, at one time, that's, it comes from taxation, that's where money comes from, other than revenue, certainly, you know, revenue we might bring in.
So it could be used to off, pay for other things instead of?
It's very limited, it's, it's limited to what we consider the TIF district, it's right down along the river and out, what, part of downtown.
It's a little tall down there in the village.
Not the whole village, I don't believe, it's very. Mayor? Yeah.
From where Chisholm stops and Livermore Falls begins, down Main Street, down Depot Street, down Park Street, all the way to the power plant or whatever it's called down there by the dump. Things along that route can be considered TIF if they meet the criteria. And that criteria is like flypaper, once you get stuck to it, you ain't leaving.
Right. I just, I don't understand what the Jug Hills Rider thing is, that's all.
Well, I mean, the, the reason why we, they ask for money to help maintain trails, a lot of the trails are out through that direction. And we, I, I personally felt, I'm not gonna speak to the rest of the board, that it could be valuable to have those trails better maintained and better shaped for the general community.
Uh, but then, so all the people that don't ride snowmobiles are paying for somebody else to do that.
But those funds are restricted to certain uses from, from however the TIF was set out, so it's, I think they're very limited with where they spend those funds in that particular program.
And that also, I guess also on that is putting kind of the code enforcement officer's salary into that, which?
When it comes to, because when he carries the title within the planner part, that kinda makes it fall under the TIF district criteria as far as economic development and, so we're hoping to be able to use some of that money to offset what it would cost to hire a full-time code enforcement officer.
And that falls under a referendum as well, that, right?
It's all, yes, all these votes.
That's, I guess, so every article that you brought up falls under referendum then?
Yes.
I'd just like to make a comment, TIF programs are great, they help communities and we should reinstate that program and make it work. Because I know that's how Kenny got some of his funding over here, I believe, to do his building. And if we have a downtown, we have a whole town that needs a lot of improvement.
Yeah.
And there's a way to actually have businesses and the community invest in improving the town together, not having to go alone without any support. So, I, you know, I think it'd be, I think it's foolish that we don't have that program going anymore. And I think we need to advertise those programs, well, just like, I came in to pay my taxes, and I can't remember the gentleman's name, but who's the tax? Assistant? Paul, yeah. He tells me about, I'm coming to pay my business taxes and he's telling me, I don't have to pay my business taxes because it's a state grant that's been around since two thousand and seven, that covers businesses' taxes. All you're gonna do is fill out a quick little form and instead of, instead of paying a few hundred dollars, I pay fifteen dollars. The state gives the town the rest of it. Every, that should be advertised to every business from here to wherever, to California.
I think that's a great discussion.
This town needs business like this tomorrow. And we need to advertise, open for business.
I appreciate that and I really just want to kind of stick, stay on topic.
Yeah, no, I got you.
Yes?
Yeah, and I can speak a little bit for the snowmobile club. The reason they need that money is they, they're trying to improve, um, the trails so people can come from outside of the community and give business to the town. Like come in, eat, and then come in and give fuel. They'll just, whatever they need to come in off the trails to come into Livermore Falls. And that money will just help improve the trails so people outside of the area will come to Livermore Falls and give us business. So that, you know, if people don't understand that, they'll go nowhere against it.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions? Yes?
The salary portion of that, does that something that's going to be able to be pulled out every single year? Or is next, next year it's gonna have to be pulled from somewhere else to continue paying that? Or is it just we gotta kind of sneak it in here and then we'll get it somewhere else? Like, I don't, I just wanna.
I mean, that's a good question and most likely we will have to come up with a new way to raise it for next year, which will be another part of the vote.
Can those TIF funds be used to work on any of those abandoned buildings in the, in those, like, areas? No, like Main Street or? And then the business could maybe access the TIF funds?
I'm not a hundred percent sure. I, I really can't answer that myself. Do we have any other questions on the use of TIF funds? None? So that brings us to the end of the public hearing on the warrant. The warrant articles, which, uh, again, the vote's going to be June twenty-fourth from two to six P M. here at the town office to seek the ballot.
Why can't I contribute anything?
It's just, those are the busiest times and it's, the longer we have to do it, we have to shut down the town office and.
Is there, is there an absentee ballot problem?
Yes.
Yes.
You can call and request an absentee ballot or you want them all to come in and request an absentee, if they are available.
Thank you. That would be, I think, helpful to share.
Yes.
Yes. That, that's actually what I was going to be sharing too.
So I, I just wanted to emphasize something. The, uh, no, no, I lost the train of thought. There, there's one thing on there that, uh, the bills are already out there, they've been approved. And the penalties that this town would face, if that portion of the bill doesn't pass, would fire exceed what it costs to pay our bills? Debt service is there, finally can't wait till you get over settled. But the debt service, if you vote that down for any reason, it's gonna cause more harm and havoc than just passing. So if you don't understand what debt service is, vote yes. Because the pain and suffering it will cause if it doesn't pass is beyond comprehension.
Joan?
So you could take funds from other places and pay that though if you really needed to, though, right?
No.
It's already been approved. You know, each, each year it has to be brought up and put on the ballot.
We can't because, like I said, we have to have that total dollar number that's approved by the legislative body on the town meeting warrant or warrants in order to be able to pay those bills. So if that article is not approved, we cannot pay our debt service.
And another detriment is that it would totally destroy the tax, pardon, not the tax, the credit rating for the town. We wouldn't be able to get any money from anywhere else. It would destroy our tax rating, our credit rating, I'm sorry.
All right, seeing no further discussion, I'm going to declare the public hearing on the town warrant closed. We will move into our regularly scheduled meeting.
Well, I do have a couple adjustments to the agenda if you would entertain those.
Yes.
Um, I would like to add under new business, two items. I would like to add, um, discussion of a potential interlocal agreement with J. for licensed plumbing inspector.
Mm-hmm, yes.
And I also would like to, um, call for a vote on, to make sure I get the right word here, the, uh, official ballot for the Andes Goggin County, um, Budget Committee, which has you listed.
Oh, button for punishment. We would also like to add an agenda item for the lawnmower, for the riding lawnmower we discussed last meeting. A MICA motion to add the interlocal agreement for J., the vote on the, uh, county committees, budget committees, and the mower for the sewer station.
I second.
Discussion, all those in favor? No minutes, we have old business, marijuana ordinance committee.
I'd, I'd like to make a motion on that. It was discussed to have a committee of nine. And through my military career, postal career, being on the board a few times, the lodge of the committee had a confusion. And I'm not trying to eliminate anybody's input, but I think if we reduce that to seven, it would be more functional. And as far as I know, last meeting, nine wasn't, it was a suggestion, it wasn't confirmed. But, you know, I, I feel, I feel a committee of seven would proceed quicker than a committee of nine. If I had my say, it would be a committee of five, but I've been talked out of it.
Do you have an idea of which to, uh?
The original proposal was three people who were against, no, eh, expanding the business.
They had two on that one.
Well, it was three when it was presented. And, uh, three, uh, existing retailers. And I think two and two would be enough. But that's just my opinion.
I couldn't remember, I thought we had, I thought it was two.
So I think it was, it was two, two business owners, two select board, two planning boards, some representative from the police department, and somebody from the school, and two anti marijuana. I think it was one, one from the school.
It was, it was one select member.
Yes. Thank you, Bill.
So we're probably gonna be dropping one of the against ones.
Get it down to seven, I don't, I don't, I don't see, the makeup of it, to me, doesn't make a whole heck of a lot of difference. As long as it's equal representation, but, you know. Too many cooks spoil the broth, is a saying that I heard a lot growing up.
Do we have any other discussion about which ones we'd like to want to switch? I mean, we only have a few that are two, so.
Uh, one's right there.
We have one select member, two planning board members, right?
Yeah.
One public safety.
One from the school.
One from the school, two against. And then two businesses, right?
Public safety, nine, yeah.
Right, so. I would, we're about considering dropping it down to one against.
No, I don't, I don't see why somebody from the school has to be there on it myself. I mean, supposedly you have to be eighteen years old to buy it. And as far as I know, we go K through twelve. And yes, there may be some in twelve that are eighteen. But having a representative from the school, I mean, that's like having a fourth leg on a three-legged school. You know, I, to me, I don't, I don't see why it needs to be.
No, I think they wanted a employee from the school or something to give insight as to the marijuana activity that the students were reporting. When she was here, I think it was last week. I think that's why they put a school person on the report.
That, that, that's up to law enforcement and the people who sell it. I, I, I don't see why somebody from the school has to be on this committee. And I'm not talking, I'm not trying to knock administrators, teachers, school board members or anything, but the law states eighteen and over. And like I said, there may be a few eighteen-year-olds from the senior class, but to me.
I don't think anybody is trying to put a student on the board.
No, 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 no. It was, from what I understood, it was an administrator, school board member, or teacher.
Yeah.
But to me, that just, I don't know.
Dana?
I don't want to get in the middle, but. You've got, right now, you've got two select and two planning board members, right?
One select.
One, okay, so why don't you make it one plan? You guys meet twice a month as it is. The whole point of committees is to take stuff off your place and off the planning board's plate and bring it back to you with a solution. Am I, am I correct? So I would suggest one planning board, one select board member, and then you've got here seven. And let us, let us work it out and bring it back to you.
So. Thoughts on that?
I make a motion, committee to accept the members to be hashed out with the committee members and town manager as to who the seven are.
I think we have, we have to choose a makeup though.
Let me make it easy, I do not want to be on this committee.
So if I may, well.
Do we need a board member, a select board member on the committee?
Not necessarily, but if, if one of you wants to be on it, we could do two, two store owners, one select board, one planning board, one law enforcement, and two anti-marijuana people. That would give you your seven.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? As far as nominations go, do we have any, any nominations? I know, can we make nominations right now and who's voting somebody? I would like to nominate, uh, Mr. Shea, right? Mike Shea to the plan, to this committee, just because it's, I feel he'd give, uh, he did put in a lot of work in getting up to this, uh, with the, with the signature collection and he's offered a water good, uh, water good input. And I would like to nominate Mike Shea to the committee. Seconded. All those in favor? And the police chief would be the law enforcement aspect of it. I nominate Chief O'Roone to also fill his slot. I'll second that. All those in favor? Is that contingent of, well, on his, uh, his appointment? He is employed by the town manager, who is obviously by the select.
He's been voluntold.
Have we received, uh, any other requests so far?
Um, they, we do have, um, we had a verbal request from Mr. Cummings, but we had a written request after the public hearing from Mr. Turrant for a store.
Mr. Who?
Turrant.
Dr. Cummings, well, Dr. Cummings used to be there. Lionel Goode was over there.
I also sent in a written request.
Oh, that's right.
To never go forward to.
Okay.
Dana, how, how was your schedule looking, Mike? I know.
I can make work. I'll pay for the Zoom if need be.
From my point of view, a Zoom member is not data. And attendance is something that matters. And I don't mean to be personal or anything, but Zoom.
I'll just say this already, I conduct meetings all over the world. I've had meetings this week with people in Morocco, people in Saudi Arabia, and in Germany. And I do it all via Zoom.
Okay.
So we should embrace technology. We've got the camera here filming us. It's no problem with the technology today to have a meeting. No one has to leave their house and all sit there for channels and tune in, be involved.
You're gonna forgive me, I'm seventy-one.
All good.
I do not have I T. vast capabilities. And I was in a meeting and you were on Zoom in the past. To me, it was a distraction.
Yeah, well, I fully.
And I am not, I am not worldwide.
No, no, that's, I, I got you, but.
Livermore Falls, sixty-three out of seventy-one years.
Yeah, well, all I'm saying is, there's no reason.
The time's coming and I'm gonna be gone, buddy.
The two for making work it out.
Given the two people, other business owners, do we have any, do we have any discussion anymore? Take that for a break for a second. Do we have any planning board members that would like to be on this committee? And we have a couple here. I know. You have to.
Like I said, we, right now, we've got two members. Those two members, whoever the select board member is, it's still gonna be a select board member. Let, let them put the committee here. Uh, we've got the police chief.
But they have to be appointed by you because it's a, it's a committee. It's a committee that you voted to form and you gave them the charges.
Yeah, well, so there's, there's a few open as well. I say we table this in the next meeting and put the committee together.
Joan had a question. Okay, can we use an alternate planning board member?
Sure. Michelle. Michelle has expressed an interest.
Has she expressed an interest? Well, I nominate Michelle Martha to the cannabis ordinance committee as a planning board member.
Doesn't she also work for the school?
She was on the school.
Yes.
Two birds right there.
That's where it originated from.
Then I, I second the nomination of Michelle Martha.
No discussion, any further discussions? All those in favor? Opposed, abstaining, no? Some discussion has been made about having a business owner off of Main Street. So we can cover both grounds.
Can you speak, Bill?
Sorry. So we've had a, the, the thought that we should have a business owner that is on Main Street and maybe one that, we only have two that are off of Main Street. We have one gentleman that would like to participate and we have some reservations about the Zoom meeting stuff. That's, that is a concern.
We don't have need to play this game about the Zoom meetings.
Okay.
I will be here for the meetings.
In which case, I would like to nominate Dana Cummings to be appointed to the committee.
I'll second. All those in favor?
So. Attention.
So we got two businesses chatting. We got one meeting. Bill, if you're put on the spot, you're going to do it?
You already got Michelle.
Yeah, we already have Michelle.
One planning board. Oh, we switched it to one. Sorry.
Which one of the five of you is going to volunteer?
Huh?
Which one of the five of you?
I do not want to be on this committee.
Now, we're gonna, alright. I'll volunteer to be on the.
I'll second.
All those in favor? All abstaining because it's big.
We still need to beat the bushes for two anti-marijuana members, okay.
Alright, so we're still lacking two members, but we're gonna look into that and we'll get back to that as soon as possible. Alright. Uh, up next under new business, we have change meeting time for select board meetings. This was something that.
Yeah, I brought it up. I think it would be easier for the folks who work in the office, make meetings if they were, you know, just a half an hour earlier, six o'clock instead of six thirty. And I think it would be better if it was a Wednesday or Thursday instead of a Tuesday. That way, it's near the end of their work week, and any new information that comes in could be presented later in the week. As it is now, if there's a Monday holiday, which there seem to be quite a few of them, they come in and the first day back to work, there's a meeting, and they may not have be, be able to be fully prepared for it. So along with six o'clock, I would suggest we consider either Wednesday or Thursday. For like I said, things that happen during the week can be presented at the end of their work.
So we can't do Wednesday, we're very, we're gonna have to change the planning board.
So isn't the planning board meet on Wednesday?
Okay, then it's on a Thursday.
Me personally, I, Thursdays are really tough. There's a few other things going on, so, I mean, I, I, I can't go a Thursday.
Well, six o'clock would be equal.
How does six work for you?
I can make it work. I can get out a little early. It's only two days a month, so. If that, I already spent for the rest of the board, and I can make it work.
How does that affect you, Jeff?
I'll make a motion, we move the meeting time to six PM instead of six thirty, and stay with Wednesday.
Effective when?
Effective, yeah, stay with Tuesday.
Effective the next meeting or effective July one?
I don't want to call me.
July one, because that gives people more notice that things are changing.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Hey, for those of us in the back who couldn't hear, so.
Sorry.
Is it just the time is changing?
It's just the time, the six o'clock starting July first.
Oh.
Yes, yours?
Can we find out if that works for Mount Lou?
Just asking.
I can't speak for the entirety, but we have other meetings that also start at six, and it hasn't been an issue. So.
But what?
And it hasn't been.
It's not an issue, probably.
Alright. Up next, we have Ken Lyman, codes.
Yeah, I, uh, I have a few questions. Evidently, I'm in violation. So I need to know, what I need for permits to move one house trailer off an existing lot and move another used house trailer onto it, making improvements of putting this newer trailer on a cement bed. And it's fifteen years newer. So I'm trying to improve the property. And I was told I needed all kinds of permits. So I guess I need to know what I need for permits and why.
Um, Rick, do you wanna kind of, you know the code better than I do, that's for sure.
Absolutely. So, good evening, everyone. If you don't know me, I'm Rick Haas, your code enforcement officer. I come from another town with a number of years' experience. For the town of Livermore Falls, what's required is you have to have a, uh, you have to fill out a form to remove a trailer out of town. It has to be signed off if you have all your back taxes and water bill paid for. Sewer, if you're up here in the sewer district. Then the new one, you have to show that the sales tax has been paid on it when you move it into town. These are not my rules. These are the town's rules. If you're gonna build a slab, a concrete slab, a concrete slab, under building code is considered a structure, and you need a permit to build the slab, so I'd have been better off just to leave it on a gravel pad. On a used one, you can do that. The new ones have to be on, uh, on concrete bed.
So in other words, I have to pay a penalty to improve something?
Um, a conversation, we could have had this before it all started, and you would have known then.
I would have, if I'd known I had to have that conversation.
Yeah. So while we're having it now, and, you know, one of the things that people have been told, um, and I believe we discussed this on the phone, was I told you all the permits you had to have, the only one that we're gonna charge for right now, because we have to, is plumbing. The rest of them, we're playing catch-up with, so that people can get the permits into their folder. Because we know historically, there has not been someone here in the code office when people want to come in and get permits. Now there is. Uh, so to go back to what you need for permits, you're looking at, uh, the building permit. The other two, to move one off and move one on, is just a record of what's here in town, and that the taxes have been paid on it when it comes in, uh, or when it leaves. So if it's got sales tax that's required, then we need to know and have proof that it's been, excuse me, like a vehicle that has been paid for. You already have a septic system there, so there's no permit required for that. But every new hookup has to have a plumbing permit, an internal plumbing permit, that's state statute. And if the power has been disconnected, uh, from the disconnect switch, then you need to, uh, get an electrical permit to, uh, have me, let CMP know that it's okay to put your meter back.
Alright, um. I guess I don't quite understand why I need a plumbing, it's manufactured housing. So that had to make all kinds of codes when it was built.
It did, but you're hooking up to an existing sewer system, which requires a plumbing permit from the state, which is a forty-dollar permit. It's a hookup fee.
I thought you said you didn't have to have a new hookup on the old system.
Yeah. Excuse me, same system.
And the plumbing is already there.
No, you're hooking into the septic. You don't need a new septic system.
Right, you don't need a permit because you're hooking up to that one.
You, the, the, you're doing a hookup, so you need to pay the forty-dollar hookup fee for, uh, mobile homes. Brand-new, out of the factory, you gotta pay the forty bucks. These are not my rules. It's state statute through the DHHS.
What if it's not?
New system, non-existing system.
Pardon?
You have to pay a forty-dollar fee for a system that we already paid a permit fee to put in in the first place.
And you're bringing in a new one.
And are these guidelines for, for towns to have under four thousand people?
This is state statute, period. You can have one person in your town, and you have to do this.
Could we get a copy of that? Only pertaining to towns that have more than four thousand people.
Correct.
I'd like to, I'd like to, this is supposed to be, I'd like Ken to discuss this. This is his time.
We're just helping him out.
I, I, I.
We love our towns here. That's why we're all here.
I understand, that's what.
Alright, and you say this plumbing permit is from the state? So the state gets money?
They do.
Can I ask a question later?
Sure.
So the trailer we took off is junk. It's not going, we moved it further down to our property, to a different place on our property, until we decided how we're going to dispose of it. So you say that there needs to be a permit or a fee paid for removal?
No, you just have to fill out a form that it's being removed.
Okay, so if it's getting removed to a dumpster?
Then you still need to fill out, you're, you're taking it off the property that it was on. It's record-keeping.
It, I mean, it comes down to record-keeping to make sure it's not going to another town that, that are not assessed as, is on.
I don't know. I believe it is, but it's not.
Well, I thought. I can get it going faster.
To make it over the thing.
And the electric permit? So that's all there. I don't quite understand why I need.
You don't have a meter now, and your meter socket that's there needs to be, uh, it has to have standoffs put on it? So CMP won't do the hookup anyway until an electrician comes in and puts standoffs off the back of it.
And that's why the meter got pulled.
So once that's been done by a licensed electrician, then I go out there, I inspect it, I call CMP.
You inspect it?
So you were the one that had the meter pulled in the first place?
No. I don't have meters pulled. That's all CMP.
And you're licensed?
Sorry?
You're a licensed elec- electrical inspector?
I don't have to be licensed.
And he is a certified electrical inspector.
I do one in two family homes.
Alright, so I gotta get a plumbing permit, electric permit. What's the electric permit cost?
Off the top of my head, I'm gonna say service and for, I'd have to look at what the square footage is. There's not gonna be a charge for the electrical permit right now. We're trying to get everybody up to speed to where they need to be. The only one that we can't waive is the plumbing and the septic permits.
But I don't need a septic.
You don't need septic.
So I gotta pay the sales tax on a new one? And get these permits. Alright, I guess that answers those questions. Money goes to the state in the plumbing. Alright, now you have five titles for the town. Are all positions paid under the code enforcement officer's salary?
Yeah.
You must be very busy.
I am very busy. And just a point of interest today, four of the five titles that I have, um, I have to be sworn in annually for each one and take an oath that I'm going to follow the rules of the Constitution and the state law.
Now, we recently voted down your salary. How are you getting paid now?
I'm still on twenty twenty-five, twenty-four twenty-five.
So the new salary stats.
July first.
Gotcha. I guess that's. How many, any idea how many voters from the town were here on the last election for governor?
I haven't been in the other one.
I don't either.
What's it, a thousand eighty-three? I honestly don't.
I don't agree.
I wanna say a thousand sixty-one. Yeah, it's, it's not much of a redoubt.
I guess that answers my questions.
Thank you, Ken. Thank you, Rick, for answering the questions for us. Up next, we have Bryce Bodo, ordinance change recommendations.
I've got some papers for you guys, so I'll give it first. Should be fine there. Alright, uh, first question I have is, we're in the town ordinance, doesn't say we decided to employ electrical inspector.
I'm not a hundred percent sure which ordinance sent me that.
Uh, the code enforcement sent me the development standards ordinance. That's our ordinance for Build the Coats.
Do you remember which page that is on?
It is an off-page. I'm asking where it is.
Rick, you, you probably pour it through a little better than we have.
Yeah, there doesn't need to be an ordinance for it.
So it's not in our ordinance?
It doesn't need to be in your ordinance.
I'm not asking if it needs to be. I'm wondering if it is.
You just answered that question.
Alright. Was there a resolution made by the town to have an electrical inspector?
I believe Carrie and I had a conversation.
So not a resolution?
It doesn't need one.
Alright, well, the papers I sent you guys, on the first page, you can see the state law. Where it's saying it either needs, uh, ordinance or resolution by the town to employ an electrical inspector. It's on the first page. Did you, does anybody know what the state law is about electrical permits? What the town did prior?
I'm not a hundred percent sure what they were doing prior.
Well, what we did was follow state law, and state law is basically, if you have a commercial building, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, if you have a commercial building, a rental property, a republic building, a state permit needed to be pulled, a state inspector would inspect the work, and a state inspector by law needs to be a master electrician. The other option is you do your own wiring, state permit needed to be pulled, a state master electrician would inspect the work, or you hire a master electrician, no permit required. That's all that's, I can find that we need for state law to be following the law. And you're not a master electrician, you're just certified, right?
Yeah, don't need to be a master for one in two family homes.
So I'm just trying to figure out what the benefit of having an electrical inspector to the town is, because before, a regular person wiring their home on their own, they'd have to pay for the permit. They hire an electrician, it's a master electrician, it's his name, his license, his insurance. So now everybody needs a permit. So what is the benefit?
Well, may I?
Yes.
So it doesn't matter if you're gonna wire your house yourself or pay someone to do it. You need a permit.
Well, the state law, if, if we didn't hire you, it's right on the front page, it's a state law, if we didn't hire you as an electrical inspector, then you hire a master electrician for one in two family dwelling, you don't need to pull a permit.
No, you fill out the eleven ninety, the thirteen sixty.
Which is what most of us have done to get power to our house.
Right, so.
Now, we have to pay forty dollars for a permit, hire a master electrician, and then you get a kind of spec. Before, it sounds just an additional forty dollars we have to pay.
So I guess my question would be, is how many of your own single-family homes are you building? Because you can only build one.
None, I'm talking about other people.
Right.
I just said, I don't need a.
Okay, so they have to pay a forty-dollar fee, just like you need a building permit, just like you need a plumbing permit.
Right, but what is the benefit? Because now you have a job.
The benefit is, is that it generates revenue for the town.
Twenty-dollar rebals come out.
Okay.
Sickening.
So. You're paying for a code enforcement department, so the whole town pays for the code enforcement salary out of your tax agent. The way that it should be is code enforcement should be self-funded. Meaning that the people that use code enforcement should be the ones that are paying for it. And that's where all your permits come into.
So if we don't need to get an electrical permit, then, if we don't need to get an electrical permit because we're already paying for a master electrician, we don't need to pay into that fund for that particular reason?
No, that's, that's just it. We don't, by state law, we don't need an electrical inspector. And in order to have one, we, it needs to be in the ordinance or a resolution. And then there's different legal terms for resolution and ordinance. Resolution is stated by a governing body. An ordinance is a rule. It's not in our ordinance. It was never brought to the people. So I'm just trying to figure out what the benefit of it is. It seems to me like it costs regular people trying to build a house an extra forty bucks. And in fact, it'd be safer to go with a state permit, because you're, no matter what, a master electrician's looking at the work. This way here, we have somebody who's not a master electrician inspecting the master electrician's work.
And it happens in just about every town in the state?
It doesn't need to, it's many towns. It doesn't need to, it's many towns.
As he.
Let's back, oh, anyway. Uh, moving on, when did, uh, where in the ordinance does it say that we adopted, chosen to adopt state code, you know?
I don't believe we have chosen to adopt, are you referring to MUBET?
Yeah.
Pretty sure we put that to bed already.
Yeah, we've already, we have not adopted that.
So we haven't adopted it, but you're inspecting buildings still?
Oh absolutely, because there are things that I still have to inspect, NFPA one oh one A.
And this is national code?
NFPA one oh one A, yeah, I would think you would know that.
I would add a lot.
If we could do anything else.
Do we have any recommendations to the ordinances, I believe that's what we're here to discuss?
Yeah, this is part of it.
So NFPA one oh one A is life safety.
Second page that you got, I don't know, all this mess of papers, but we're on the second page, I believe it's showing that no other court code can be enforced in state name, state law. I don't know if you guys can see that, but it's pretty obvious. Do you know if, uh, state law, sorry, state code applies to agricultural buildings or national code?
It does not.
Okay. Uh, so the amendments that I'd like to make, I guess I'd better get it, because these papers are all a mess. They're on the last sheet of the papers I gave you guys. Uh, First Amendment, actually let me back up, I have the development standards ordinance that he sent me the email that we're going by. And it says amendments, amendments to this ordinance, I'm sure you guys know that, it says the selectment, but I'm just gonna read it for everybody. Amendments to this ordinance shall be initiated by a majority vote of the planning board by request of the select board or a petition of a number of votes, voters equal to at least ten percent of the number of votes passed in the last two electoral elections. So what I'm doing now is going to the select board, as you can tell, request, so that's for the planning board. After the planning board gets it, says the planning board shall hold a public hearing on the proposed amendment. Notification of the hearing shall be posted and advertised in a newspaper of general circulation in the town at least ten days prior to the hearing. And then it says adoption of amendment, an amendment of this ordinance must be adopted by a majority vote of the town meeting.
Did you say in the beginning that you made a petition with a certain amount of signatures?
Nope, it says at the beginning here, it could be, amendments to this ordinance shall be initiated by a majority vote of the planning board by request of the select board or a petition. Uh, the fourth part of the amendment says that, uh, the application will be can be amended at any time if the discretion of the select board without a requirement for a public hearing. So, I am going to the select board, hopefully you guys request, press it to the, uh, planning board, if you don't, then we'll start the petition. The amendments that I'd like to make are all buildings and structures started or in place at date of adoption of this amendment shall be grandfathered in, no retroactive permits or inspections of any type to be required. The Second Amendment that I would like to make to our ordinance is all farms and agriculture, including forestry in the rural area of Livermore Falls, will have permit by rule or permit by right, no permits or inspections are required. Because state code doesn't apply anyway. The third, we adopt not to enforce state building code, since it's not in there, we just put it in black and white that it's not in there. Four, we adopt not, we adopt to not have a municipality employ electrical inspector, because it's unnecessary, it's not required by state law. I don't see a benefit, and other than making the town money, that is. And then the fifth one doesn't require the planning board, so I'm asking you guys to make immediate amendment by the select board to remove the fees for all agricultural permits.
So what are the fees for to have the agricultural permits?
Seven cents a square foot.
Right, but what is it, that just covers the building?
It's, it's still a building permit, so state statute under land use requires all buildings have to be permitted. There's no, if it's agricultural use, it doesn't matter, it's a building, still needs to be permitted. Do you want me to give you the chapter in verse?
Yeah, I've got it here, it says that agricultural buildings are exempt from this, it's a, I can find it in my mass. It would be section three ten, MRSA, adopted to the amendment, main uniform building and energy code, show that buildings used as livestock, hirvey crops are not subject to code, there's more. I also have a bunch of paperwork from the USDA. Uh, they'll actually work with towns trying to, uh, grow smart bean. USDA will actually work with towns, and it even says in here to make sure that everything is made when it comes to farming, as long as it's in the rural area, because we have the Amish, for instance, that we don't want to be, you know, if we don't need the rest of them, the code doesn't apply.
But they still come get permits.
That's, that's right, I'm not talking, oh, they're coming to get permits, I'm trying to make amendments to the ordinance, where we won't need to anymore.
So can I ask a clarifying question, Bryce?
Sure.
I should say they ask. So you're proposing zoning?
No.
So how would it, what would the differentiation be between an agricultural area versus a village area?
I believe there's, uh, thing in spot for rural area, right? There should be a village area and a rural area. So the amendment to the ordinance says rural area.
Okay, but so that's zoning.
I don't think it's zoning, I think it's already what we have in place.
So we don't have any zoning.
So we don't have a village area and a rural area?
We have a TIF district.
So that's out of the TIF?
There is a village area that's been determined for years, from the J-Town line, Chi-Corn, the power lines in the road, it's considered the village area.
Oh, I learned something today, it's a good day.
I always thought that.
It's still a village area, doesn't have to be zone. As it, uh, I did make a personal request for this information, these amendments earlier to be able to review them. I move to table this discussion. Until the next town meeting that we get a review. Our town, the town select board meeting, for further review.
Can I, I don't, I don't know if I'm still able to talk, but I'm just wondering, as far as the petitions go, does that get presented to the town clerk, the select board, the planning board, when we gather the names on the petition, where do I go with that?
Do you think it's something? Do we have a second on the table?
My second.
Discussion, all those in favor? I have a good sheet here from, I called, did some research, or some other code enforcement officers in other towns, what they're up to, and I'm able to share it with you on some of the questions, just out of curiosity. Alright, up next, we have interlocal agreement with Jay.
So the, um, licensed plumbing inspector for the town of Jay is really retiring for good, and is wanting to enjoy his grandchildren, he said. And, um, so the manager and the code enforcement officer approached us about potentially developing an interlocal agreement for those licensed plumbing, um, inspector services to help them. Um, I, I don't have a strong opinion one way or the other on it, um, we did have the discussion with our LPI there as well. They did say it was, it was actually very minimal, they don't have a lot of construction going on. Um, they did have one potential subdivision coming in, up way up in North Jay, that I think was like seven or eight lots.
It is hard to hear, sorry.
They said it was, you know.
Probably here, if you stopped your side by, then we could hear.
Maybe one or two, um, permits or inspections in the month. Anyway, just a open discussion on that.
Would that be, I mean, I think that wouldn't be a bad idea, if we can bring in some revenue stream and offset some costs.
So you want me to explore that further with the Jay manager?
Would you like a motion, or you just?
Please.
I make a motion that the town manager look into an interlocal agreement with Jay for potential, uh, permit.
Plumbing inspector.
Plumbing inspections. All those in favor? Opposed? Up next we have vote on the budget committee, the county budget committee.
So, um, surprise, surprise, Will, you have been nominated to participate in the county budget committee. Um, we're actually asked to vote for two people, um, the other one is a select person from Minnet and you.
Do you want to take a roll call vote right now, or?
Yes, please.
It's hard to hear. Do we have a vote on this, I accept, so. I make a motion that we appoint Will and the person from Minnet, if we have to vote on him also, to the Anderson Treasury Committee Budget Committee.
Second.
All those in favor? Alright, up next we have discussion of the mower for the sewer treatment plant. Last meeting, there was discussion and a vote to approve four thousand plus for a no turn riding lawnmower. Doing some research, I have found that the previous plant, sewer plant inspector bought a push mower that may have been used once or twice. The Cub Cadet, which is down there, which we told was tired, is functioning fine. They were mowing the one thirty-three and south of road pump stations, and I saw it in operation, and it doesn't sputter, it doesn't cough, it doesn't kick, it's running pretty well. When I talked to the, uh, sewer director, he said that they also mow the, uh, I guess it's the police firing range down by the dump, or excuse me, transfer station, I've been told it's not proper to call it. I rode down here today before the meeting, I'm seventy-one years old, I've got a bad hip and a bad back, and I believe I could mow all of those things with a push mower, no problem at all. I think spending four thousand plus on a fancy riding lawnmower with zero turn and all this and that is a total waste of taxpayers' money. And I am bringing a revote as to the purchase of that piece of equipment. And if they need something new, when that cadet stops running, you can get a small riding lawnmower five hundred or less, not four thousand. We need to watch our spending, and to me, that is one total waste of money. And I would like to suggest that somebody else make a motion, and we'll have another vote on that, and if he's already ordered it, we can say no. And if it hasn't been ordered, we need to direct him, if it's voted that way, not to buy it. So we need a motion to reconsider? Yeah, we voted, we voted for it, so we need a vote to rescind that motion. Who made the original vote? I got no idea, it's a miniscore.
Doesn't matter, if you rescind the motion, it's, it's a dead issue. If you reconsider, then you can have a discussion about it again.
I move to rescind the previous vote for the riding lawnmower.
Okay. Discussion, all those in favor? Let us know how that goes. And, and, and by the way, they were mowing today, and they did not mow the police firing range.
Couldn't we, like, possibly fence in those areas and rent the Nap Street boats to go and mow it?
Yes, get out of that.
So, so Rena, did you want to make a motion to?
Yeah.
What you previously said to, uh?
Okay, there was a motion tabled on a trailer to, is that what you're talking about?
No, I'm talking about, um, so you want, um...
The vote on the mower has been rescinded.
Okay, alright.
So if it's been ordered, he needs to cancel the order. Yeah, he said he checked on that trailer and it's buried in the back of, with a bunch of stuff. So to get it out would take an hour or two, and then he'd have to put it back in, but that's true, if we don't buy the larger lawnmower, you don't need the trailer. Alright, up next we have warrants of abatement deeds, quick lane. I move to approve payroll warrant, number twenty-one, amount twenty-four thousand one hundred eighty-three dollars and twenty-four cents. Number twenty-two, twenty-six thousand eight hundred and eight dollars eighteen cents. The general fund warrant, number seventy-one, four thousand seven hundred fifty-five dollars and ninety-six cents. Number seventy-two, four hundred eighty-nine thousand nine hundred forty-three dollars and eleven cents. Second session, all those in favor? Next we have quick lane deed, map eighteen lot one fifty-two.
This is one of our foreclosed properties that has been cleared up and is ready to be signed over.
You just need signatures?
Yes, please.
You need to approve.
Yeah, you need to approve it, and I need signatures.
I move to approve a quick lane deed for map eighteen lot one fifty-two.
Second.
All those in favor? Abatement, map twenty lot one sixty-nine.
So this is actually two abatements, this is a property tax abatement and a sewer abatement. These, um, both these abatements are for the Millet Street property that previously was deeded to the American Legion.
I move to abate the taxes for map. Map twenty lot one sixty-nine. Map twenty lot one sixty-nine in the amount of two thousand five hundred thirty-one dollars.
A second.
All those in favor? Alright, with none supplement, can we have any board discussion?
I can do this, someone else will, please.
I move that we abate the sewer for map twenty-one sixty-nine in the amount of thirteen hundred thirty dollars and eighty cents. Second session, all those in favor? Oh, I'm to the board discussion. Nothing from the board, manage discussion?
Um, so you noticed, I hope, the cute little fuzzy animals on, uh, your desks up there, those actually were a donation. Uh, Kim Collins made those, and she donated those to our public safety departments for children that may be in crisis. Thank you to Kim for that.
Um, I'm asking to close the office on the twenty-fourth for voting at, uh, two P M that day, so I need a, uh, motion and a vote to do that.
Make the motion, we close the town office at two P M on June twenty-fourth. All those in favor?
And I also am asking permission to close the office at noon on the thirtieth for year end.
I make a motion to close the town office June thirtieth. I'll second that, all those in favor?
And then the last thing, I will put a plea out to TV, or Land, whatever, uh, I need two anti, um, marijuana, uh, people for that committee. So, if anybody wants to participate in that, please let me know, and we will get you before, or the names before the board at the next meeting.
Department head discussion, Doris?
Just wanna let everybody know, again, voting will be here at the meeting room, June twenty-fourth to the sixth. Um, we do have absentee ballots available upon request, feel free to come in, request one, call and request one, we can get it to you. Um, also, I don't know if anybody has been around the building, but the start of our community garden, um, is in place, we started it yesterday. We have some nice raised beds out there, um, Liam Reed came down yesterday, helped reset the water barrel. Um, so we are in hopes of collecting some rainwater, and, um, we've got the plant, the dirt came today, we'll have that going. And we are naming it My Friend's Garden, because everybody is friends, and Liam thought that was wonderful. And no matter who you're talking to, they'll always know where you're going, because you're always going to a friend's place.
Doris, have they rescheduled, do we know the, um, history night?
I have not heard anything about a reschedule.
That's too bad.
It was nice to see everybody out on the, uh, on the route for the Memorial Day Parade.
Thank you, Doris. Kenny is not here. Oh, me, uh, Mr. Haslam. Rick?
I'm good.
Good. Abe, do you have anything for us tonight?
Yep, Mr. Chair, politely, I do not, thank you.
Okay. We have no mark, we do not see bill anywhere, alright. We have public comment? Yes, Erin?
Yes, I'm Erin, um, live on Maryburg Road, in Livermore Falls, and I just want everyone to know, the website is now updated. There's a list of all the current select board and planning board meetings, and everyone is invited. And events, we're having events listed, so you can check the website and know what's going on.
Big thank you to the, to the website committee, that's, that's been huge, I was looking at it the other day, it was nice to see it all updated. And I know that's been a big request, and thank you. Yes, John?
I signed the form, I guess, the sheet, you know, so I got, but I'll try to keep this brief, I know it's late, just things I wanna get out there. So, first, good evening, neighbors, you know, I'm here tonight, because I care about the town, and I know many of you do as well, but we've gotta take a look at where we're headed, it is not good. Now, let's start with some of the facts, last year, there were forty-six people that passed away, and only twenty-four babies born, that's a town that's shrinking. Median age is pushing forty, and younger families aren't sticking around, why? There's nothing giving them a reason to stay. No jobs, no economic growth here, and they don't have, you know, careers and jobs to invest in. Now, the seven million dollars being not quite accurate, got some changes coming in, but, you know, the town spent seven million dollars, that's a heavy burden on us, and it's getting worse. Government always finds an excuse to spend money it doesn't have, and this is over periods of time, and we're paying interest on all of that. Taxes, they've gone up twenty percent since twenty-eighteen, from twenty-one dollars and sixty cents per thousand to twenty-five dollars and ninety-five cents. At this rate, we'll be at thirty-one dollars per thousand by twenty-thirty, and who can afford that? Select town, it's likely towns spending with a blank check, buying every new toy, truck, or mower, it wins, so they're asking, do we really need this? Thank you, Ernie, for asking, do we really need this, and come and find out, we don't, I think that's probably the case with a lot of other things. You know, if taxes were optional, we'd see real quick what people are actually willing to pay for, and that's the difference between needs and wants. Imagine if taxes were voluntary, who would be paying for a lot of things we're paying for? All the fire trucks, police cars, and all of the different things that are going on, do we really need that? Now, let's talk about full-time code enforcement officers, we don't need one. We're not, we're not booming with new buildings, our homes are old, are old, yes, but they're still standing, and here's the kicker. Every time an inspector signs off on something, he wants to be code, I'm sorry, I will not address person directly. Every time a code enforcement officer, inspector, signs off on electrical, plumbing, structural, the town takes on liability. One electrical fire, one accident, and we're in court facing lawsuits and rising insurance costs. Where's the value add to that, to the citizens of the town, right? It's not just unnecessary, it's dangerous, and provides zero value to the citizens of Livermore Falls. Because, and because of all of this, we're pushing business away. I was working with someone, ready to bring twelve, sixteen good-paying jobs to the old Baker Building, we were excited, but once the town started flexing on permits and rules, we hit pause. Now, we're looking elsewhere, that's jobs lost, and that's opportunity lost. Meanwhile, we have RSU seventy-three, graduation rate is seventy-six percent, the state average is eighty-six, not great, Maine does not do well in education. We used to, we were a great school, and a lot of great people came out of some of these schools. Families noticed that, and did not going to bring people here because of the comment. Like, the example, the town, the truck, the need, the school needed a new truck, because the existing one was rusty, amazingly, just rusty overnight, I know, I got, I'll be just real super quick.
We're out of, we're out of time, we got a long meeting already.
We're not out of time, you go, let them go.
This is a selectment meeting, the public comment when voted in was three minutes or less, I was on the board at that time, he has gone three minutes or more. He's in charge, and he hits that gavel, everybody be quiet, or we will have somebody remove you.
I appreciate your input, John, and I'm really looking forward to more conversation, I'd like to keep this meeting moving. Deb?
I really hate to talk about this, but I was talking with our county commissioner, and I'm all for the sheriff's department getting their new building. But since that, there has been something brought up about them having multimillion dollar expansion. So, as you're gonna be on that budget committee, I would like you to be very vigilant, because multimillion dollars of anything, that's split between all the towns in Andes Cogan County. And it would be very detrimental to our budget, it could be.
All I can assure you is that that's been a conversation I've had about that, so.
Well, yes, but I'm not sure that all these other people understand that.
They're asking for what, twenty, twenty-plus million dollars, so. Do we have another public comment, yes sir?
I'll just make this quick, maybe end it on a quick note, that, uh, my wife and I, you don't usually see us at these meetings, but we're snowbirds, we head south in the wintertime. Not this last winter, but the winter before our house was broken into. Uh, we came back after four months of being down south, and our house had been ramsacked. Uh, I ran into one of the police officers the other morning, I still work five days a week, and he was, this was like four-thirty in the morning. And I stopped to thank him, because we had to put in a surveillance ring, you're probably familiar with it. And, uh, my wife, we're down in Florida, and she's saying, the police are at our house several times this last winter, after we had told them that we got broken into. And it was a very secure feeling to see these guys that went around checking the doors, went around the back of the house, and, uh, just like to let you know, I should have said something when the police chief was here, I did mention it to one of the.
Do we have any other public comment?
Is the issue on the goats on Nap Street, is that a dead issue?
I, I really don't want to discuss that.
When can we?
You can, you can come speak with the code enforcement officer, he's, he's got a pulse on that.
Do we have another public comment, Bryce?
Yeah, uh, I, that paper I gave you at the beginning of the meeting, that the Secretary of State sent me, you guys might wanna read that. Because according to who I spoke with anyway, it's, uh, all these referendums that were voted down, it's considered a, uh, reconsideration. And there's certain procedures that need to be followed for reconsiderations of referendums. I don't think anybody petitioned, there's another thing that says the referendum has to be at least, equal to the, uh, number of who voted in the prior one. So, if this is accurate, we can't be reconsiderating, repreach, all of this, so, I, I urge you guys to read it.
Definitely will, do we have any further public comment? Okay, seen, none?
I move to adjourn.
I second the motion, all those in favor?